Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being present at our September 1st, 2022 City of Fair Oaks Ranch Council meeting. For the record, it's 6:30 PM. Council, when I call your name, please say "here" or "present." Mayor Maxton.
Here.
Councilmember Stroop.
Here.
I see Roy Elizondo is not present. Councilmember Bliss is not present. Councilmember Kerner.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
And Councilmember Menchow.
Present.
With five members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A reminder to everybody here tonight and those that are on with us is that we are live streaming tonight's meeting. I ask that anybody that's going to speak before council that's here tonight, if you would, please use the microphone that's up here. The reason we do that is so the individuals that are on livestream will be able to hear. Those that do speak, I ask that you state your name and if you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident or not. And with that, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. And we have three individuals that signed up. First is Kitty Inkstrom.
Hi, my name is Kitty Inkstrom. I live at 29365 Rain Tree Ridge. That's in the Rain Tree Woods subdivision. And I'd like to talk a minute about oak wilt. My understanding is that the city has a calendar that says when you can voluntarily prune your trees and when you can't, and that year-round, meaning 365 days a year, you're required by city law ordinance, I'm not really sure what the right vernacular here is, to seal those wounds. Recently, we had heavy trash pickup. In anticipation of the heavy trash pickup, while walking through my neighborhood, I noticed that a lot of my neighbors had contractors or were doing pruning themselves. I was very dismayed at the number of instances where I saw no evidence at all of sealing the wounds, even though this time of the year, they have to be sealed, like I said, 365 days a year. One of my neighbors I saw had a wound almost 18 inches across. That wound was not sealed for almost five days. Guidance is that it be sealed within 15 minutes. We have a really bad oak wilt problem down on Cone Amara, where you can see dead trees all over the place. And it just, you know, appalls me that this is going on. I actually talked to a contractor who didn't know that there was any requirement to do this. I called the city, and the city did send somebody out to have them address it, but, you know, I can't catch everybody. One of my neighbors, I was really appalled when I said something. He got very nasty at me. He told me it was his property and that I needed to buy my own business. And when I told him that oak wilt spreads because of the beetle going around into other people's property and damaging other people's property and causing us financial harm, he basically told me he didn't care that he was be selling his house before there was a problem with any beetles in his trees. I don't think that that's really the way we are taught to treat our neighbors, certainly other people's property. I know the city council took a stand a long time ago about feeding the deer because it causes problems across the neighborhood. Well, oak wilt spreads from neighbor to neighbor because you don't seal your trees. And then it costs thousands of dollars to have the tree removed, not to mention the reduced property values because everybody loves our live oak trees in the hill country and everything. So I would really like to see if council can do something about this. I called to find out, what do you do when somebody doesn't seal their tree? All I got was, we go and counsel them. There's no fines, there's no penalties, there's no follow-up, there's no, there's no nothing here. Other areas like Chauvin Oak Park, I understand that contractors can't come in without a permit to cut trees and to prune trees, and they have to show that they know about sealing the trees and all that sort of stuff. So I would really like it if you could take a look into this and see what you can do about oak wilt spreading. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And you're absolutely correct. One of the uniqueness of our city is the big oak trees that we have throughout and that we do need to protect them. So I appreciate you coming forward and the information that you provided tonight. Thank you. Next up is Denise Dever.
Hello, my name is Denise Dever. I live at 53 Silent Spring, which is in Burnie. I'm not a Fair Oaks resident. Kendall County resident, which a few of you are too, I'm assuming. I've got a concern about your last council meeting that I listened to, and I heard the discussion about your budget for an engineer's plan for Almond Road. Very concerned about that. It's very confusing to me of why you're planning to have a two-year engineer plan with no path forward at all at this point to actually correct Almond Road. And you don't have any discussion at all about the eminent domain that will be required to be utilized to actually correct that road and straighten those angles out? So my confusion is, is that I've never seen a town, a city, and I've lived in several, that has proposed spending that much money on an engineering plan that is basically not going to get the road fixed. You could have anything happen in the next two years, and that plan's worthless. I'm very concerned also that Almond Road, as everyone knows that has lived here very long, is part of the Kendall Gateway. And we've tried to shut the Kendall Gateway down, and we have been successful, by the way, except for the city of Burnie and the city of Fair Oaks. Neither one of you have said one word about completion of that project being shut down as county commissioners did. I haven't really seen this council show up except for mayor at the Kendall County-Burnie-Fair Oaks Transportation Committee. I haven't seen your input there. I haven't heard anything about this process on Almond Road being brought to that committee. They're within weeks of closing their report out that's going to be submitted to this city council, Burnie City Council, and the Kendall County Commissioners Court. I would have thought if the three years that these volunteer citizens, some of which is, I believe, was appointed by Fair Oaks Ranch, you would have discussed this and had it brought to them. The last part of this that's very confusing to me is that you've got six roads that have been determined by an engineer's report, I'm assuming, saying that they're in deficit. I don't have an actual percentage of deficit, but if Almond Road is in that bad a shape, why is your little segment going to get this much money thrown at it when you've got the rest of it in San Antonio ETJ? Part of it's in Kendall County? You have no control over those. But you're tossing a lot of bucks at this, if I read your budget correctly, in the next four years? Three years? If this is part of the project, an engineer's project, to be submitted to AMPO and then onto TechStop, to be part of the Almond Road-Kendall Gateway project outside of Kendall County Commissioners Court's resolution, I am assuming that you all know that there's going to be great pushback from the community in Kendall County to this city council. So I would rethink this if I were you all. I would think very seriously about what you're trying to accomplish with two years of six-figure expenditures on an engineer report. I'm not even sure this engineer is best practices. You didn't put this out for bid. You know, where's your best practices? They have had a lot of problems in the karst areas on all of these roads as you go deeper and deeper into the hill country. You're in part of the most sensitive area. Did you know that? Did you listen to the Vinnie report that was presented to the Kendall County-Burnie-Fair Oaks Transportation Committee? It's on video. It's available to you. He will tell you as an international expert how sensitive this area is, and any type of road improvement or construction is going to require a lot of additional requirements that I don't know that your engineer's up to it. My opinion, but I will be informing Kendall County citizens of what goes happens with your budget and how you go forward and be watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Mayor, can we, Denise, do you mind leaving your email with staff? So, I mean, we can't address all of your concerns now, but, so we could at least reply to you. With Christina, the city secretary, would be nice. Thank you.
And the last individual that we had signed up for citizens to be heard is Lance Kyle.
Lance Kyle, 226 Cascade Caverns Road. I'm the Cascade Caverns Cave Attraction Operator. We're not too far from here. We share the same, I'm in the unincorporated Kendall County, but, you know, we share the same ZIP code with you all, 78015. Not too far. I'd like to add to Denise's comments a little bit more about the environmental sensibilities. There seems to be a lot of discussion lately about Almond Road by various local councils, committees, and commissions. Please know that this road lies within a major contributing zone to the Edwards Aquifer, which stretches from the Sibolo to Balcony's Creek. If you haven't seen the video by George Vinnie, please do so. I recently emailed you all the link about an hour or two ago. Southern Kendall County and Northern Bear County, a lot of people don't know this, may have the highest concentration of caves, caverns, sinks, swallets, and other recharge features in the entire state of Texas. You can actually see some of these swallets, which kind of act as storm drains in the Sibolo. When you drive along Keeneland Drive, when you look off of the weird trail there under that overpass, you can see openings in the ground, if you know exactly where to look, which help alleviate stormwater runoff in, you know, big rainfall events. To underscore this point further, there are seven show caves in Texas, and two of them are in Kendall County. My cave and cave without a name. It seems like every large land tract in the area has at least one of these features. According to the Texas Speliological Survey, or TSS, there are 367 known caves in Kendall County, but the real total could be as many as 1,000. Some people think of these geological features as simple oddities, but many of them are actually complex and perform important aquifer recharge functions, as well as stormwater dissipation. Damaging them has long-term consequences. Let's think about that every time a developer requests approval for a high-density subdivision like, what's it called, the Reserve? I forget what the new name is. Ranches in Burnie.
Burnie Ranch Estates.
Yeah, Ranches Estates in Burnie, Burnie Ranch Estates. Or, you know, also think about it when TechStop wants to extend or build yet another road. Thank you.
And Mr. Kyle, you said that you sent a...
E-mails to you all about an hour or two ago.
We all have your email address. Okay. And thank you, sir, for being here tonight and your comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the individuals that I had signed up for tonight for citizens to be heard. Is there anybody else here this evening that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like an opportunity to speak? Okay. With that, then we'll move on to our presentations. And we have three presentations tonight. First is the presentation of a five-year service award to Nathan Dominick, police officer, and Lacy Gonzalez, police officer.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we are acknowledging several of our officers, actually. So these two in particular, we have Officer Gonzalez and Officer Dominick here with us. And we are actually celebrating five years of service with the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. So these two have participated in a lot of our programs here throughout the city. Some of them you guys may be aware of, like the Junior Police Academy, National Night Out, some of those different programs, the trunk-or-treat that we do here as well. So we're very excited to be celebrating their five years with us. And of course, we have some plaques and recognition and all that good stuff to give them as well. So first off is we have pen sets. And then we also have recognition plaques. And let's get in close so we can get you guys a picture.
Can we get a picture with them?
Thank you.
And thank y'all. Thank you for what y'all do every day.
All right.
Can I ten-year award?
And we do. So our next one is for Sergeant Paul Cepeda. So if you want to come on in.
And are we on camera right here, or do we need to move?
We'd like you to be in the middle.
I'll make sure that everybody at home gets to see also.
Yes, so this is our ten-year service award. So just like our other two officers, Sergeant Cepeda has been a definite value add to the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, participating in all of our events and really contributing to everything that we do and uphold here at the city. So it is our honor to recognize ten years of service with the city for Sergeant Cepeda. So, and for our ten years of service, we actually give a plaque.
That's a smile, you know.
Are you smiling?
That's all they get.
That is a smile.
All right. So join me in congratulating all of our officers on their years of service.
You don't like being up there. Okay, all right.
All right.
And then we have a new employee also?
We do. So we are technically introducing him, but he was not able to be here tonight. But we do have a new addition to our public works team. His name is Garrett Sharp, and he is going to be joining us as a utility technician. So we do want to just congratulate him for joining our team, but again, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to go into executive session at this time pursuant to Section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code. A quorum of the governing body hereby convenes into closed session. This is referenced Section 551.071, which will be consultation with an attorney to receive legal advice from special counsel and the city attorney regarding the city's groundwater rights. And Christine, I have the time now, is 6:49, and we are going into executive session.
Third is the approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, which is traffic in vehicles. And that is Article 01.033, which is prima facie speed limits, adding 25 mile an hour speed limits and establishing stop signs on streets within the Front Gate subdivision. And fourth and last item on the consent agenda is the approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending the city of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, which is Chapter 12, which covers traffic in vehicles under Article 01.033, prima facie speed limits, adding 25 mile per hour speed limits and establishing stop signs on streets within the Elkhorn Ridge subdivision. Is there any council member that would like to move any of these items from consent to consideration? And with that, could I go ahead and get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They're moved. I second.
Chesley and Laura? And all, vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And with that, we'll move on to our consideration and discussion items. The first item up tonight is the consideration and the possible action approving the first reading of an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the city's exclusive franchise agreement with Republic Services for the collection, hauling, and disposal of residential garbage and refuse waste in the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. Turn it over to you, Tobin.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, appreciate it. As I think Christina provided you late this afternoon, a copy or an email from Mr. Armstrong from Republic. They're requesting that we take no action tonight. They're asking for a little bit more time to look at the contract on their end. If council does agree to skip or take no action on the 15th, we'll be bringing back an item to extend the contract for another 60 days. So all of the issues can be worked out. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Armstrong if council has any questions.
Good evening, mayor and council. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Tom Armstrong. I handle all the municipal accounts for Republic Services in the San Antonio market. Been with the company for 16 years and I've handled this account for eight years, but I've been involved in it since 2007, which is pretty close to when we took over. So I'm very familiar with the city and its trash and recycling needs. The reason I came to you guys tonight is we have a little bit of a problem that put us in a situation where I was afraid we were gonna miss the deadline. The contract, the trash and recycling contract expires September 30th. And we have to have two readings of the ordinance. I learned yesterday that they've done some realignment at our corporate office and they've got some new folks that are in the approval process that aren't used to the typical cadence of getting these things approved. And they're very backlog right now. I found out today that it hasn't even been through our legal department yet. So puts us in a situation where I don't want to miss this. I don't want it to go through a first reading, get approved, and then I find out that there's a change and then I have to come back to you guys with my hat in my hand and say, I know I told you that, but we need to make a change. So I would really appreciate your consideration of this. I think it would help us out a lot. Won't be any change to any of the residents' service, no change to their rates during this period. It just buys us a little bit of time to make sure that we're able to get through all of the details. If something does come up, I'll have time to work through that with Tobin and the city attorney. I don't expect anything to come up, but at the same time, I don't want to assume that it's not, since I haven't received it back.
With that, do we need to table the item until the 15th September meeting or just take no action tonight?
You can take no action, mayor, or you can table it if you want. On the 15th, assuming you take no action tonight, I'll be bringing forward a temporary extension agreement so that we can have a continuity of services with Republic for another 60 days, because the contract does expire on the 30th. And so we do need that extension.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, sir, and thank you for being here tonight. And with that, we'll move on to our second consideration item tonight, which is the consideration and the possible action approving a resolution authorizing the execution of an advance funding agreement with TechStop for a highway safety improvement program project and authorizing the city manager to execute applicable documents. I'll hand it over to Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Grant Watsonabe, Director of Public Works and Engineering Services for the city. And I'm here to present a resolution for your consideration. This resolution authorizes the execution of an AFA with TechStop for our HSIP project and also authorizes our city manager to execute the applicable documents. So the reason I'm bringing this forth tonight is because this is a requirement for TechStop. Once approved, the ordinance or resolution will become a part of the AFA as an attachment. And again, this is in support of the post-ohwiden HSIP project. This was already estimated by our GEC and approved by TechStop for a total combined construction cost of about 2.7 million. Under this program, the HSIP program will cover about 90% of that cost, which is 2.4 million. The city is responsible for 10% of that construction cost, which comes out to be about 268,000, in addition to engineering, environmental assessment and mitigation, some direct state costs for their management of the project, and also any overruns in event there are any. So we've looked at the best available costs associated with all of this and we verified that what's proposed in the FY '23 budget will cover the city's cost share.
Any questions from council? Any questions from anybody here tonight? Then could I get a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of advanced funding agreement with TechStop for Highway Safety Improvement Program project and authorizing the city manager to execute applicable documents? They're moved. Scott? Second?
I second.
From Laura. Any other discussion from council? That will vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved.
Thank you, council.
I will move on to our next consideration item, which is the consideration of possible action authorizing city manager to execute interlocal agreements to allow for cooperative purchasing. Over to Clayton.
Thanks. So the Texas government code allows for cities and local governments to enter into cooperative purchasing programs and interlocal agreements with other cities, co-ops, things like that. Basically, these items that are included on these sort of cooperatives agreements, when you utilize this, this actually fulfills our competitive requirements because they're bid out in a way that does so. We also, part of this consideration, we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Halotas that will allow each city to essentially piggyback off the other party's contracts that they might have. We have something similar in place with Bear County. Halotas has something in place with Bear County. And so we just don't have anything with us together. And being in similar sized cities, utilizing similar type of work and contracts and things like that, we just thought that would be a good idea for us to venture into this. And if, what we would do is if we executed this, we'll include some language in our contracts that'll basically allow the vendors to extend their pricing if they choose to do so. There's no commitment that they have to make, but it'll just allow them the opportunity to do that if they want to. In addition to the agreement with the city of Halotas, we have three cooperative purchasing organizations. The National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, the Region Eight Education Center, which is also known as TIPS, or the Interlocal Purchasing System, and the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts, which is also referred to as SmartBuy. These are pretty straightforward as far as joining. It's just the government code requires that the city council authorize us to do that before we do, before we actually enter into those. As far as benefits, this just gives us another tool in our tool belt if we choose to do so. There's no sort of commitment that we have to use any of these contracts, but it just allows us an option to have in case we need it. As far as a budgetary impact, the only one that has any sort of cost associated with it is the Texas SmartBuy program. That's a $100 annual cost. There is one, an additional benefit to that is that we can advertise on the comptroller's website. It's called the Electronic State Business Daily. Just gives us a little bit more visibility on a statewide level if we choose to post our projects on that. So it's something that I think would be worth our while in doing. The interlocal agreement's been reviewed by the city attorney and the other cooperative purchasing agreements are just all the standard sort of documents that they require any sort of entity to use. And so what we are recommending is that we authorize the city manager to execute these interlocal agreements to allow for cooperative purchasing with the city of Halotas, the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, the Region Eight Education Service Center, and then the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts. And with that, I'm happy to answer any sort of questions you might have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
The one with the city of Halotas, who initiated that conversation? Have the city of Halotas have other agreements like that?
Well, they have a similar agreement with Bear County that we do. They have basically the same exact agreement. And just in past, their public works department and our public works department, just in conversations with maybe utilizing similar contracts. For instance, we both used the Slurry Seal this past year. And there's just been conversations over the past year or so that have taken place that we thought, since we both have the Bear County agreement with Bear County, that it might be valuable to do that. It would also too, if we have different sort of applications, different sort of contracts that we already have in place, some of these contractors, they may come from other states or other areas. And if they're in the area, they can get us in a schedule, things like that.
So do we have a pretty good idea that the city council in Halotas will be, I mean, have they seen this or are we looking at it first?
Yeah, they've reviewed it. Their city attorney has reviewed it. They provided comments and essentially they just told us to let them know if it gets approved by our city council and they'll put it on their agenda.
It sounds like it just came out of like fruition from a relationship that we built between two cities.
Yeah, between the two public works departments. And then eventually, you know, if we have success with this, then maybe, who knows? Maybe we'll have those conversations with other cities, maybe of similar size in the area, things like that. So this would kind of be a starting point for us.
Any other questions? Any questions from anybody here tonight? With that then, could I get a motion to authorize city manager to execute an interlocal agreements to allow for cooperative purchasing with the following parties? The city of Halotas, the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, the Region Eight Education Service Center, and the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts. Could I get a motion?
They're moved.
Chesley?
Second.
Emily? Any other discussion from council members? Any other discussion from council members? All in favor of approval of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you, Clayton.
Thanks.
And move on to our next agenda item, which is the consideration and possible action authorizing the interlocal agreement in the city of Bernie for animal services in fiscal year 2022 and 2023, and authorizing the city manager to execute this agreement. Turn it over to Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a reoccurring agreement that we do every year with the city of Bernie for housing of animals that can't, owners can't be found, or animals that have been surrendered to the police department from the city of Fair Oaks. We contract with the animal shelter there in Bernie. Usually, they house animals three days. At that point, we release them over to Bernie, Bernie adopts them out. Most of the time, we're pretty good about getting back to the owners, but we do have this contract yearly with the city of Bernie. Helps us reduce our overhead costs here, and doesn't require us to have three to four employees staffing a kennel 24/7, so.
Go ahead. Has it always been with Bernie? Have we ever worked with Kendall County?
As far as I can remember, it's been with Bernie. I'm not sure if there was an agreement with Kendall County prior to me getting here.
A long time ago, Chief.
Unfortunately.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I have a question. Is there a reason why we only make it a year? I mean, can we make it longer so we don't have to renew this every single year?
Oh, part of the agreement is, is we pay 10%, breaks it up. So we pay 10% of the cost for one and a half employees for Bernie, plus 10% of the operational cost for that year. Those operational costs change depending on how many dogs come in and go out of the animal shelter. So we wait for Bernie to establish their budget, and once we get that budget, we get the updated contract, and we give to you.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions from anybody here tonight? Then could I get a motion to approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Bernie for animal services in fiscal year 2022 and 2023, and authorizing the city manager to execute this agreement? They moved. Scott?
I second.
Chesley got the second? Any other discussion from council? Then all in favor of approval of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thanks, Chief. The next item that we have up tonight is a discussion of cost of living adjustments and the compensation study, and I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Hughesen, Assistant City Manager. This item, council requested that the, that we bring the COLA discussion back, that it be placed on the agenda for this evening. I don't have a formal presentation for this one, but your packet includes a summary of the, the COLA and its impact as it's currently reflected in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 proposed budget. The proposed budget is also part of your packet. I've heard 341 pages mentioned a few times this week. So as discussed, the budget calls for a 3.2% COLA in what we're calling a tiered fashion, where it'd be 3.2% for pay groups 1 through 27, and 1% COLA for pay groups above 27. Similarly, police pay groups PD 6 and PD 7 would receive a 3.2% COLA, and pay group PD 8 would receive a 1% COLA. We recommend pay group 27 as the cutoff because there is, I guess what we're calling a natural break in classified positions between pay groups 28 and 31. So in other words, there are no current positions in pay groups 28, 29, and 30, if you look at the grid that's in your packet. So therefore, the compression issue between pay groups, you know, caused by two different levels of COLAs is minimized as much as, as can be expected, given that the proposal inherently has two different levels of changes. So as we've discussed, the, the pay plan is what the council adopted two years ago in, in November of 2020, starting with fiscal year 21 budget. It called for, among other things, ensuring that the city is competitive at the, the top one-third of the market relative to its peer jurisdictions, adjusting for inflation annually to maintain that city's position, and also comparing with peer jurisdictions to ensure that the city is, is keeping pace with those comparables. So that said, again, per council directive from the last meeting, we've provided a summary of the budget impacts by funded by Department of a tiered COLA in the packet. That's on page 80, I believe. A tiered COLA, again, of 3.2 and 1 is about $119,000 to the general fund, and about $38,000 to the, to the utility funds for the next fiscal year. I'll note that the consideration page had a slightly different amount. The grid was correct. The consideration page had an older number of 124. It's actually about $119,000. The grid does reflect that. Again, that's the plan that's currently included in the proposed budget, the 3.2% and 1%. The table on page 80 also compares just for, just for analysis purposes, what an equal across-the-board adjustment would be for all pay groups. That would be an additional $26,000 to the general fund and $12,000 to the utility fund. That would affect 10 employees in total. Finally, the, the packet includes a resolution to adopt the pay plan for the new fiscal year. So this is for draft purposes, for you to see in advance tonight. This would be approved along with the budget and tax items, starting at the next meeting on September 15th. Again, the council approved the pay plan initially in 2020, and the plan recommends that all adjustments are also approved by the council, as are done typically annually. It is traditional that, that we do do that as part of the budget, because typically, that's when adjustments take effect. Specifically, the procedure says that, this is from the guide itself, for the compensation plan, that overall increases or decreases to the pay schedule are authorized only upon approval of the city council. When a cost of living increase has been approved by the city council, every number on each pay schedule is adjusted by the percentage increase by the city council. So what that says in effect is, every number on that grid is being increased by, in this case, 3.2%. So in other words, what the resolution says that, that would, that would be proposed at the next meeting is, although the pay ranges would all increase by that to maintain consistency with the plan, the actual pay increases would be as proposed in the budget, the 3.2 and the 1, as we've discussed before. So you can see where all those pay ranges are, starting on the following page, and the pay, the, the, the pay grids themselves include the pay groups and the job titles of each that are in each pay group, so you can see which pay groups are affected by how, basically 1 through 27, which, which job classifications are in that group and which are in 28 and up. So that's my summary, Mr. Mayor. I'll take any questions.
Go ahead.
Last time we met, I believe we kind of gave direction to put the 3.2% overall COLA in the budget, and the proposed budget that I believe is what currently we're looking at now has a 3.2 for some and a 1% for others. What drove that change?
I'll take the first stab at it.
Okay.
The, what came out last one is, is we did want to, I guess I'll say, reaffirm the COLA, and, and the council voted to that effect, and the continuing dialogue after that talked about a recommendation for specific categories. The term bucket was, was mentioned a few times into how that, how the, the COLA should be distributed, essentially. So the, the idea was that if we wanted to prepare a plan where different types of job classifications received different COLAs, this was the recommendation to provide an option, other than just an across-the-board adjustment that was talked about in July through the beginning of the budget process.
Okay, so, so even though we voted for 3.2%, the budget was proposed without that, but with, basically trying to take into account comments you heard during council?
Yes, that's fair.
I've got a couple of questions. The first thing I want to start off with is, I'm very supportive of what our city staff does for our city. They're phenomenal. They do a great job. They're very supportive, and they have taken care of this city very well, and do their job very professionally. And, you know, this is the third time that we've looked at the COLA, and in some aspects, it's still confusing to me, and maybe it's how it's been presented. So I went back and I looked at the November 20, or November 19th, 2020, I think is when we approved the policy that we would look at for compensation study. And as part of that, it says that we'll use the employment cost index as the measure for determining salary adjustments. Is that correct?
In parts, yes. It's not the, it's, ECI is, is, in the words of the, the study, I believe, a, should be considered a major factor, are the exact words it uses.
I think, and it lays out that at a minimum, we should meet the ECI for the previous year. And then it goes on to state even further is that if we believe that labor costs exceeded what the ECI lays out, then we should use our 12 benchmark cities as a relationship to determine what their cost increase were for labor. So really, I'm just trying to formalize this a process, because to me, we laid out a policy on how we would determine this, and maybe some of the confusion for me specifically is how do we get to where we're at today? Because now we're talking about Consumer Price Index, and we have Cost of Living allowance, which really weren't addressed as part of the original policy recommendations that were laid or approved by council. And so I'm just trying to, to make sure that I understand where we're going and make sure that we're clear with this, because honestly, to me, it just comes down to, if we looked at the ECI and we determined what it is, if it was 4.1 or 4.5, then that ought to be the measure that we start with, then from there, looking at our 12 benchmark cities, and comparing to what their compensation was for this year, and then making a determination from that. Is that my on or off track?
No, I think that's on track, and I think, I, I think going back to that July meeting, that is what the staff recommendation was, or at least what attempted to do. We presented the, the ECI figures at that time from March. It has been updated for the June numbers, which is the most recent. We did also look at CPI, which is included in this, in the plan. The plan says ECI should be the major factor, but you can, you also should look at CPI and the comparables, like you mentioned there. So we looked at ECI, CPI, and we also looked at our, our peer cities, both from a ATCMA regional survey that the council was provided, as well as a, a separate survey that our HR department has done, to look at those comparables, to take all of those factors into account to come up with a, a recommendation. So to your point, I think the ECI is, is the primary driver. It's not necessarily the, the only driver, so we try to consolidate those different pieces of data into a holistic recommendation. And at that point, that's why we provided the, the three options for you back in July, that essentially amounted to about a 6.5% adjustment, whether it was all at once, over two phases, which was what the council ultimately had picked, or a tiered option that we're talking about now.
One of the other pieces of that, that was approved on 19 November in 2020, is that anytime we do any allowance upgrades, or we make any changes, that the percentage should be applied to the entire staff as a whole. And it gets back to the piece that you were talking about, and that we get compression if we start applying different percentages at different levels. But I'm just looking at going, this was policy. This was decided on already by the council, so it lays out how we should do this. And so for me, it's, it's really get down, we have a lot of other information that we talked about, and I want to cover something else. But in determining salary adjustments, I didn't see Consumer Price in there. And so what I was looking at was just the ECI, and then from there, we go to our benchmark cities. I think if it was laid out in that manner, I mean, I think it provides a pretty straightforward decision for us to make. Instead of... And maybe it didn't, maybe the policy I looked at didn't have everything in it, but what I read was ECI, and then consider it, and we should at least meet that. And then if we wanted to go beyond that, it was looking at our benchmark cities to determine what they've done, to determine if we should go above the ECI. It's laid out in that manner. I think it's pretty straightforward for us. And it's not that, well, for me specifically, it's wanting to do the right thing. So we have a responsibility, yeah, one, to take care of our city staff. They're taking care of the city, so we want to do the right thing for them. But we also have a responsibility to ensure that we spend our revenue dollars in a, in a prudent manner. And so I just want to know, if this is the policy, then can we just follow the policy and make a determination on what this increase in salary percentage should be? My belief, it shouldn't be called a COLA. It shouldn't be called Consumer Price Index. We should be looking at an ECI and plus if we want to go beyond that. Go ahead.
I wanted to add, I did the same research, and the one other comment that I saw in the policy, or the recommendations that we adopted as a council, was that any salary adjustments, whatever we call it, should be predominantly driven by the 12-month. It says that staff would, would do an evaluation annually versus the 12-month ECI, and as, but then it also says you can also take into account other cities, right? But then the one other comment it had in there was, any salary adjustments should be made to the salary base rate, not be like a one-time adjustment. That was the other recommendation. And so I kind of felt the same way as the mayor, because we hired a consultant that is an expert in pay compensation. We spent a lot of time hearing, you know, doing an entire evaluation of how we should set up our compensation, and then how we should maintain it, and I, I agree with the mayor that we should follow that. And so if they said, I do an annual review, look at the ECI, propose it across all salaries, and then if we need to, based off of extenuating circumstances, market adjustments, inflation, we could potentially go over that, but we should always at least meet the ECI. And what I didn't get in the original presentations, but I've since gotten, so thank you, Scott, is what those ECI numbers were, because I don't feel like we got that exact number when we were talking, to make sure we were hitting that number. It was in there somewhere, but it was hard for me to find, and, and which ECI number we're using, because there's different types of ECI numbers. And so I think after I had talked with staff, I got, I got a good answer, and Scott, if you want to share kind of the answer that you, that you gave me, is what ECI you used, and what was the ECI for this year, that, to make sure that we're at least hitting that.
Sure. And to be clear, I want to, I want to go back to the, to the July presentation again, to, to clarify one thing. So at that time, I would understand that it was either new to us, myself included, or it hadn't been really looked at since probably November of 2020. So a lot of things were probably missed, forgotten, whatever. But I can affirm, and you, and one can go back and look at the, the council packet, that all of the ECI rates for what Councilmember Kern is referring to, for, for civilian all, for state and local, and the, and what's called civilian, or the composite wage rate, were all specifically on that slide, as was the CPI level at that time. And what the recommendation was, essentially took an average of that, and that's where we got our starting point of 6.5%. Those numbers are on the slide. You can look at that. It was there. Probably needed more education, but, but I can affirm it was definitely there. So that, at that time, when, at the July numbers, the June report had not come out yet, so we were using March figures then. yet, so we were using March figures then. Coming back, we have, at the end of July, they released their June report. So where we are now, and if you bear with me, I have to find this in my notes again, we are using what's, what's called the, the ECI for the civilian all category. And that, that encompasses a, essentially was a weighted average of, of all, all private sector employment, as well as state and local workers to get to an average. So the, so the civilian all was a 5.3% for wages and salaries as of end of June, and 4.8% for, for benefit costs. So that's the primary number that we were looking at. We also include to council, an update to that same slide I was talking to you about, it had those categories and the CPI adjusted up to, I believe it was 9.1% for the CPIU and 9.8% for the CPIW. That CPIW number, which is, which is wagered, is important because that's the number that the feds use to determine social security inflation and other federalized pension benefits for the following year. So that was given to you, I believe, three weeks ago, give or take. But that's, but those are the figures we're using as part of the analysis, along with the, the more recent survey data that we received.
So you were using 5.3% for the ECI? Is that, is that what you're saying? Because that's the wages and salary?
Yes.
Okay, so 5.3%. But you, the proposal adjusted up to a total of 6.4 because you're taking into account CPI? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so we've already authorized 3.2 of that 5.3 in the July adjustment. And so we have to make sure, at least in this budget cycle, we make it up at least to 5.3 by policy to keep up, but potentially higher if we want to take into account other factors besides ECI. Is that what, is that what you're, I'm trying to understand.
Yes, yes, that's exactly right.
Okay. Got it. And the policy that were the recommended from our consultant, who did this whole thing, was that when we do it, it would be on the salary rate, not just like a one-time amount?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I apologize, Scott. So it's helping me understand this. So even though we went through this, we were talking about the ECI. And so to me, that's what the policy lays out. But then we still brought CPI into it. And I'm not sure, it wasn't part of the original policy. So why do we keep instituting that?
It is part of the original policy. I could, I could, and I'm happy, happy to show you the pages in the document. It, it's, it does say that the ECI should be the major determinant, or a major factor, it says, in determining. But I'll see if I can find the language really quick. Right under, right under that section, it, there's a, there's a bold heading that says Consumer Price Index. And it says CPI measures the changes in the cost of consumer goods, which we all know is not as useful an indicator for judging the competitiveness of salaries and benefits, but it is an important economic indicator of the buying power of employees' paychecks. And that's, that's right from the study. So what's, that's the saying is, yes, ECI is the main determinant factor, but you should, as I think has been laid out, but we should also consider CPI and market competitiveness or peer jurisdictions.
Does it say that?
It says that. That wasn't, that's, that was an exact quote.
But was it in the recommendations section? So when we adopted it, we said to adopt the recommendations as laid out in the recommendations port of the report. And that's what I was reading, and I didn't see CPI in there. Maybe I overread it, but you know.
Yeah, in that same conversation, it was in the slide, it was the second bullet on, this is in the November report now. I think it was slide 17, if you go back to the November, the November report, it had, ECI was first, CPI was second, then it talked about some federal workforce, something, something, I'm sorry.
No, I was looking at the four bullets. So it said, these are the recommendations that we make. One, and there was four bullets. The second bullet specifically said, here it is, yeah, future salary schedule adjustments should be made, at least the percentage change of the Department of Labor's Employment Cost Index for salaries and wages over the preceding 12-month period available from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. And it gives the website. And it says that's what should be used. And then the next bullet just says it should be supplemented by calls to benchmark employers using the study or review supplemental data. But there's no part of the actual recommended portion of the policy that said CPI, though if you read further in to the document, I'm sure they used that at some point. But I was just looking at the four recommendations that were made at the very beginning of the report that we voted to adopt. I would, I didn't read every page of the, apologize, of the 300. But that's what I was kind of really driving towards. And so I think I was with the mayor and trying to understand that I would like to see, I guess, going forward when we do this, is start with, hey, this is what the ECI was, this is how we would get to it, and then any recommendations to go above that for whatever reason.
Right.
I think that's what I was, I was looking at. So I didn't know CPI.
At the end of the day, they're, they're all, they're all guideposts, right? There's nothing, there's nothing that says you must use X, Y, or Z, right? They're all, they're all different.
That's not true.
No, we, we actually voted to do the ECI. I mean, that's what I was, I think that was the point we're making.
What, what was the driving factor in changing from doing it annually in the budget to doing it mid-year and then the second half?
That was two factors in, in response to what we're seeing in the market, and also as, you know, honestly, a, a consideration of, of where our employees stood at that time with respect to the inflationary factors that were going on. So as part of those recommendations, we wanted to give the council an option. Of course, one option is do nothing, but also to whether we want to do something right away, which was the split option we talked about, do it all mid-year, or, or wait to back to. But, but the impetus was the, and is, the inflationary pressures that have been going on since the beginning of the year.
On a note, I would say that, that in my book confused the factor, since we have a policy saying this is what we're going to do, we should probably stick with that in the future because I think it caused confusion for all of us in this situation.
It's not the norm. Not normal times.
My belief, we haven't laid it out in this methodology. There is a slide in here that we went through first, that it talks about the, the ECI. The numbers are not the same numbers that we're talking about here, and it's combined with the Consumer Price Index. Would it be too much to ask to relook this, following the policy that we have, and just lay it out in, in numbers that are related to the policy that was established by council? So that we go back, we, we show what the ECI is, you know, for the preceding 12 months. That should give us the starting area that we look at. We have several numbers that have been put out there as an ECI. I'm not sure what is accurate. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and then follow the policy. And if, and y'all did put out, you did give us a slide that talked about what other cities or counties were doing as far as their compensation upgrades for the year. But is it related to the benchmark cities that we looked at that was part of our compensation study?
We have both. There's some overlap, for sure. We have the, so the first survey that you saw had, that was a TCMA region survey. Some of those were our original peer jurisdictions, some were not. We do have additional data now of more of our, our benchmark cities that we can include.
And just backtracking a little bit, I mean, honestly, I had to do some research. So I had to school myself, too. So, you know, when we first looked at this in July, I didn't have all the information that I have today. And so it's been a learning process for me. But just going back and now believing what, or seeing what I believe the policy to be, all I'm asking is could we go back and review it and just lay it out according to the policy? I think that, to me, just provides it out in a, in a straightforward manner that says, hey, this is policy that was made prior on how we make this determination. Here's the information, and we go from there. I think if I don't know what I know today back in July, this wouldn't, I would not have had all the confusion that I had up until today. And I apologize. So that's, it's my deficit that I didn't understand it at the time. But all I see now is that understanding what the policy is, can we just lay it out as the policy states? Maybe it's more of going to look at this just to make sure we fully understand it. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah, the, the answer is absolutely. We'll prepare it with just ECI. But for clarification, and respectfully, that's not what the policy says. It doesn't say ECI is solely, it's the majority. It also talks about the benchmark cities and other supplemental data. And so when the comps study, if you read back to the appendixes, when it was adopted in 2020, CPI was used to establish all of the original pay scales. It was also used last year, when we brought the 2.5% COLA before council. We had slides that showed you we were averaging, just like we proposed to do this year. So it's absolutely council's decision to not use CPI or other supplemental data. But the compensation study, it does not say solely as majority and other supplemental data. And I believe that's what we have done. Again, it's council's decision. I'm not trying to argue with y'all, but.
I'm confused by your comment, though, Tobin, because I'm literally reading the words in front of me. And it says, future salary schedule adjustments should be at least equivalent to the percentage change of the ECI, I mean, over the last 12-month period. I mean, it literally says that. It doesn't say majority, it says should be. And then it says could be supplemented by calls. And so I don't, so I, I do think we should at least start with the should be portion and then show that part, and then show any other supplemental things on top of that that might be beneficial.
So in the presentation that Catherine Ray presented to us at the time that we adopted this, in her findings, she also utilizes ECI, CPI, national survey data, benchmark cities in her recommendation for what we should adopt. So we have modeled that and followed that in accordance with the methodology that she utilized. So I don't know if that helps any, but.
Well, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is the actual document she gave us said recommendations, one, two, three, and four. And our motion said, adopt the recommendations in the report. And nowhere in that recommendation did it say use CPI. It said use ECI, and then, then adjust with supplemental. So that's what I, I don't, whatever the PowerPoint slide said, but we literally adopted what those four recommendations were. And so I want to make sure that we follow that at a minimum, and then add the other stuff on it.
Yeah. And, and I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding because, because at minimum, that's, that's what we utilized, was the ECI. And then we also looked at other outside factors and benchmark city salary data. So I guess I'm, I'm confused about what we're missing because we did provide the ECI number as, as its own. We averaged it with the CPI because it was a big factor this, this year in particular. And then we also, again, utilized benchmark data from, from our benchmark cities. So.
The confusion for me is, because you just said it, we averaged it with the CPI. And I'm going off of the information that's right here, that's the recommendations. Now, it is a executive summary, but these were the recommendations that we voted on on 19 November 2020. So this, to me, became the policy. So.
For, for what we should be looking at, at the minimum. So at minimum, if we looked at nothing else, which it does recommend that we do look at other supplemental items. So at minimum, we should be looking at the ECI and adopting nothing less than that. But in, you know, very specific years, this one being one that's obviously unprecedented that we haven't seen before, that is why we then brought those other figures in, because we needed to present the full information to, to council.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I understand how we got to the numbers.
Mayor, I think we hear, we hear you loud and clear. We'll bring it back with just the, the ECI, and, and then we'll have the other supplemental data if you want to consider, but we'll break it out, itemize it out.
Right.
It's not, not a problem.
Because I want to make sure we at least cover ECI, what it is, you know.
So that really, these are salary adjustments? Is that what we, based on Employment Cost Index? Is that what we're looking at right now for the year? So ECI change. One of the other areas that I had confusion in, and it's really beyond the, our topic tonight, but in the first presentation that we did in July, we talked about living wage. So I, I'm not sure what a living wage pertains to, but one of the comments was that we have 30% of our individuals that work for our city are making below the living wage. So I'm not asking that we discuss it tonight because it's really beyond what we have as part of our agenda, but I am asking that it's something for consideration that I would ask that we look at in the future because our policy guidance was that we maintain in the top one-third of all of our benchmark cities. And it's hard for me to believe that we have one-third of our city making below the, the living wage, and we're still in the top one-third. So I don't want to discuss it tonight, but it is something that was of concern to me. And then the last piece on this is that we, we've, introducing a resolution to adopt this salary adjustment. I don't remember, is that something that we do every year? So as we look at the ECI and we make these adjustments, is a resolution the requirement? Or is it something that we've just approved and put in as part of the budget?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's a requirement, but I think it's a best practice because keep in mind, we've only had the pay plan for two cycles, essentially. So year one, we adopted it. My understanding is we adopted the adjustment as part of the budget last year, and now we're at this year. So I think as part of the recommendation to adjust the plan holistically, what the resolutions is trying to lay out as part of the budget is that we are just formalizing the rates by which we are adjusting and how that impacts the full grid. So it's, it's a more formal methodology to get to the same place.
So where we would actually document the facts as part of our policy on how we got to the rate increase that we're going to make in salary adjustments?
That's the intent, yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? So there was no formal action on this one.
I do have another question. So how does this affect us moving forward in budgeting if next meeting, I believe we're supposed to have the first reading of the ordinance, and now we're asking for new numbers? What does that do to us?
You'll have the 3.2% budget overall because that was the direction that we got from council. So the 3.2% number is in the budget, and that's what all the public hearings will be based on. If y'all end up doing less than 3.2%, we can back it out and you can adopt something that's less.
We have a question on the comment. So the budget is going to have 3.2% across the board because the presentation we have tonight says 3.2% for a certain portion and only 1% for another portion. Which one is in the budget?
Heared system now, so we'd like to get a little bit of direction from the council on exactly what you want us to put in the budget.
I thought we voted on it twice to put 3.2% into the budget.
My thoughts were at the last meeting is that we approved an amount that was equal to 3.2% overall, and to add that to the budget, but then that we would make a determination on how to divide that at a future meeting. And so that future meeting would be today. But we don't have, in my belief, enough information to make that decision today. So if we just left the total 3.2% in the budget, we'll make that determination, and I believe we could vote on the budget with it included. It just wouldn't be divided up until we make a decision on how the salary adjustments will be made for the year.
Right. And again, the delta. Right, and again, the delta between the two options that we've discussed so far is $26,000. So that would be the swing either way, unless we obviously went with something different than what has been discussed so far. That would be the change, up or down.
Okay. But is, is my thoughts in line? I mean, we could approve the total amount, just goes into the budgets earmarked for salary adjustments that we can make. We should be able to make it before adoption of the budget. I mean, we have, well, we have two more meetings?
As scheduled, the first reading would be at your next meeting, and I think that gets to Councilmember Munchausen's point.
Uh-huh.
And then the second reading would be the special meeting on the 22nd.
Yeah, so we would have time to review this and make a decision on salary adjustments, and then really formalize it before the adoption of the budget on the 1st of October. Or that, until the budget goes into effect on the 1st of October. And we'll adopt it, I guess, on the 22nd.
Before the budget, yes, but we would want to have at least a total amount going into that September 15th meeting, which is the next one. So you could prepare two different versions of the ordinance to decide which version the council wants to...
Well, I think what we just said is that we approved 3.2%.
Or we can do that, that's fine.
And put that amount in the budget as a lump sum that says, I don't know that we call it COLA, but salary adjustment for the fiscal year will be a 3.2%. What you're looking for is how we divide it up.
Yeah, I think, okay, yeah, two points. We can introduce the ordinance with the total, and that is your budget authority. You can, I think, just still discuss how to divide that up, that is true, yes.
Then if we went with a lower amount, not say...
We could implement?
Right, I mean, it would be added back to the general fund and allocated.
Right.
Somewhere else.
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Chesley? Any other comments or questions for Scott? Good. Any questions from anybody here tonight? And this really, there was no action needed on this item or offered as part of it, so...
Correct, so you'll see...
Did we provide enough information?
Yeah, absolutely. So you'll see at least three actions next week then, so for the property tax, for the budget itself, and then for this, for the pay, the pay plan.
And I'll just reemphasize again, Scott, it's not about, it's about doing the right thing. And I believe that, I know that I feel this way, and I believe all the other council members feel this way also, that we are so proud of what our city staff does for us every day. And so what we want to do is do the right thing for them. And so in that, we just want to follow policy to make sure that we're straight. And honestly, my belief is, it just became confusing, and that's what, as it was presented. And so I'm just trying to get it back into some methodology where we can look at this and make a decision based on straight information, which is by our policy.
Sure.
Are you just going to stay up there while we...
Yeah, yeah, that was the plan, yes, sir.
So the next consideration item that we have tonight is the discussion regarding the FY 2022, 2023 budget. Turn it back over to Scott.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. We want to provide a brief update to the changes since the last version of the budget on August 18th, with some update, some updated balances for your consideration. Again, the current version, which was in your packet, which was published or submitted last week to the city secretary and posted online, includes these adjustments that are here tonight. It includes additional capital projects and equipment purchases that were discussed last time, using reserves. And again, it includes the COLA items that we just discussed in our last discussion. Like last time, you have the slides, and most of them simply provide updated figures or calculations. So again, I won't go through every number. But again, overall, for the general fund summary, this is, as we discussed last time, based on about 3.4% total property tax growth and the other budget growth assumptions, such as sales tax, franchise fees, et cetera, that we discussed before. After all of the changes and updates, adding some equipment purchases, we're technically spending about $100,000 more than we're taking in in revenue for this year. Again, this has changed because we include some one-time items from last time. So while generally, a deficit is not optimal, it is driven by one-time purchases, they're not necessarily recurring. So it's, I would still consider this overall a structurally balanced budget. We talked before with the capital projects that are included. The budget uses essentially all of the $3.8 million unallocated fund balance to fund several capital projects or strategic action plan projects. So based on this budget, we would expect to end fiscal year 2023, the end of next year, with about a $94,000 unallocated fund balance. That's updated slightly from your packet, based on the third quarter projections, which I'll talk about in the next presentation. But based on some modest savings and revenue adjustments we found this year, that's $94,000. It could be added back either for, well, for your fiscal year '23 discussions or beyond. I guess finally I'll say that even though we're through this budget allocating all the unallocated reserve, the budget does still maintain the six-month operating reserve per the city council policy. So the primary changes, again, since the last meeting on the 18th, and we had the discussion on the light item detail, again, we added back the COLA. We added back several one-time projects, including recodification of the city code of ordinances. We did appropriate the projected reserve balance for the court security fund, as was discussed, and some of those one-time equipment purchases, mower, dump trailer, fuel, station, and public works. And as proposed, the budget allocates the remaining, basically the delta between all those items in our unallocated fund balance to the proposed Civic Center project, which is about $413,000, which could be used presumably to jumpstart planning and design process going forward on that. SAP fund are just the items that we already just talked about, adding the fuel station and the Civic Center project into that fund via a transfer from the general fund. Just as a reminder, all of the projects in the SAP fund are ultimately funded by the general fund through a transfer. Sir?
On the Civic Center, what is the 400 grand getting us? Just, I understand the word "jumpstart," but what is, what are we jumping?
Well, I'd have to go through a long planning process with council and probably others, but in my mind, it's primarily design, if we get to that point in the next year.
Okay.
Wouldn't be anything spent without council approval if we wanted to go back, if we wanted to go back through the design and everything? That would be the product money that we would come back and say, "Council, we're going to issue a professional service agreement for here's the scope, do you agree with the scope, and do you want to spend any of this money?"
Got you, thank you.
So at this time, all we're doing is we're allocating 400, or $412,000 to say, "We have reserved this for use on the Civic Center." There is other work that we need to do to be prepared to even look at the Civic Center. But if it were all to work out, we did reserve 412,000 that could be used as part of that in FY 2223.
Following up on that question, is that 412,000 more than was already allocated? Because I believe 600,000 is already allocated.
Didn't carry forward the 600,000 from last year.
We didn't?
I didn't disbudget it, just not carry forward.
I thought this was just adding on to the 600,000. And then you had said, "That'd only get us halfway to where we want," because that's the discussion we had last time, was there was 600 that was unused from last year, or this year, and then this would be on top of that. And it won't get us all the way to the potential 2 million cost, but I thought we had money already that aside for this, and this was just adding to it, because we expected higher costs. Can we just double-check that even, because I remember that from last time?
Yeah, was the 600 allocated in fiscal year '21?
And this year, but we didn't use it.
I'll double-check that.
So if we're operating in a deficit, if we were to reduce that to 362,000, so we're not operating in a deficit, I just, I have a hard time allocating, allocating kind of like la-la land money to, when we're going to be in a deficit.
Right, and Summer might be able to explain this better than me, but really, it's just a function of how we're doing the transfers. We could technically move $100,000 over to the SAP fund, use a transfer or unallocated fund balance there and not be in a deficit. So it's really just a split of how those two funds operate. Whereas the projects we put into the SAP fund versus in the general fund, when you net out, it's essentially a wash. So that the $100,000 difference is just what happens to appear in the general fund. It's not an ongoing deficit.
I mean, I understand that it's not an ongoing, and I know that some of it's a one-time deal, but I just have a hard time spending money that we don't have.
I think what stood out to me, and maybe it's in line, and if it's not, you know, let me know. But so when I read your general fund summary slide, the first slide that you presented, what it really shows is that our, from our revenues and our expenditures, that we're spending more than we're taking in as revenue. And that revenue is based on a .329 tax rate, correct?
Yes.
What we were looking at. And so what stood out to me, and maybe it's similar to what you're saying, is in this general fund summary slide, it says, "We're spending more than we're taking in." So the options would then be is, one, we could raise the tax rate, which .329, I think, is what everybody would like to keep at, or we have to find a way to remove expenditures from that plan.
So our current revenue is funding all our current operational expenditures. That 100,000 deficit, it's not that we don't have that money. We're choosing to use your unallocated, all your surpluses from this year and the previous years of that 3.9 million. You're spending 100,000 on some one-time expenditures in the general fund, some of those capital things. And then the other 3.8, we're sending to the SAP fund for all those big projects. So we're not spending money we don't have. We're buying $100,000 of some one-time capital things, and we're using that unallocated surplus to fund it. So the general fund has that 3.9 million that
It's a surplus.
we saved from the previous years and this year. We're now just spending some of it, 100,000 of it, on capital that's going into the general fund.
So the total surplus is 3.9 million. We're using 100,000 in the general fund to cover that deficit.
The one, for one-time expenditures, for some of those capital equipment pieces.
And then 3.8 in the SAP fund.
I see. That makes more sense.
Help me explain it, too, so, thank you.
What's the total increase in total revenue? So all, things all in? So sales tax, property, all of that, the increase in revenue over last year?
I'm assuming it has changed from the last set of slides we got, which I think it was around 9.4, but I...
Yeah, I'll have to go back and do that, and probably want that with and without transfers. I don't have that number handy, but I can get it shortly. I'll get that before the end of the meeting. See, we talked about the SAP fund. You've seen this before, this is the, just the running tally of those items that have been funded throughout the budget preparation process, apparently. So we've noted the new items since the last meeting at the bottom that are shaded with the bracket. And we also wanted to provide, I don't think we've done this in previous presentations, but it has been in your packets, just a, an overall fund balance summary in the different categories of fund balance. So the largest piece of the fund balance is, of course, the operating reserve of six months, which we talked about before, that's about $4.5 million, ending next fiscal year. It also summarizes several of our smaller restricted fund balances. So the various court fees that are restricted also includes the debt service fund level and the equipment replacement fund. That's the equipment replacement fund, of course, is to fund future equipment purchases based on depreciation in the general fund. And you'll see a similar balance in the utility fund when we get there. Speaking of the utility funds, we have an operating surplus in the water fund and a projected deficit in the wastewater fund, which we've talked about several times. Again, this should largely be corrected if the city adopts a revised wastewater rate sometime early next year. From the last time, after the press, several meetings, I guess, there's only one proposed change in our utility rate structure for next year, and that's on the surface water fee. The flat fee for that would increase from $14.25 per month to $15.01 per month, and that's based on the city's changes to the purchase agreement with GBRA. And that was implemented more recently for, to increase our water commitments. Everything else is the same. And the utility fund change is very minor. Again, we just added in the COLA amount, and we, and the utility fund's portion of the dump trailer that was added. Only changes in the utility fund. So this is an ongoing list of all of the funded, the newly funded items in the utility fund. And here, we just separated these items between the operating budget of the utility fund and the utility SAP, SAP fund budget. Again, we talked before, there are some scheduled SAP projects that have not been funded, pending further discussion and/or funding. These projects likely would move to the top of the list the following fiscal year after the design phase of these are completed and funding has been identified. And like the general fund, we provided a net position summary for the utility fund, which is the functional equivalent of fund balance for enterprise funds. And some are utilities worth over $16 million. Most of that, over $11 million is from the value of the infrastructure in the system. The operating reserve in the utility fund is about $2.5 million. That represents, again, about six months of operations. The target in the utility fund is nine to 12 months. So we haven't quite met our target in that fund, but we are at six months with this budget, which is virtually unchanged from the prior year. The utility fund, as you can see, also has capital reserves. The bulk of those come from impact fees. And again, the utility fund also has an equipment replacement fund based on depreciation, like the general fund. So I think I'll take any other questions you may have.
Any other questions? So Scott, so we've been through this. I think the one adjustment that we're making to the general fund balance is the COLA bracket out of each of the individual departments, and then we're going to put a one-time 3.2% salary adjustment reserved for future determination. Is that into our budget? Everything else should remain the same? Did I explain that correctly, or...
I'm processing, sorry.
Or would it be applied, like, 3.2% to every department, and then later on, if we want to adjust individual departments? How do you guys do that?
Typically, we would do it by department and have any delta at the bottom. If, I think what the mayor suggested is we leave a flat and put it all at the bottom. I mean, it's six and one, honestly, to us.
Okay.
Whenever you see that.
Whatever.
But we'll ensure that the total is there.
Okay. And then based on that, so our next step is starting to take a look at approval of the budget and the tax rate.
Yes, sir. We'll have those three items, including a public hearing. We'll have those three items, including a public hearing on, on both at the next meeting.
Yep.
As advertised.
All right.
Real quick, will our tax rate change any by adding now the unstepping the step and all that mess that we're doing again?
No.
Where's that money going to come from? The 20, whatever, $1,000, 26? Isn't that what we said it was?
Mm-hmm. If we, if, if we did add the full $26,000, I mean, we could either identify that much in savings, you know, frankly, it's, it's rounding error as far as the, the operating reserve amount goes. Or in terms of tax rate, if you want to get to that point, that's, I'd have to get my calculator, but I'm guessing that's, that's roughly .12 cents, give or take. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend doing that, but.
We wouldn't change the tax rate. We propose to underfund the, the equipment replacement asset or one of those other areas. Again, it's, you're talking about 20, 30,000.
We could adjust, we could also adjust the civic center, which is, which is kind of our balancing item, if you will, by that same amount. So there, there are several options within there.
Anything else? Are you good?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah? Any questions from anyone else here tonight? And there was no action required on this one, so.
Not at this time.
All right. Are you just going to stay up there for the?
One more. Yes, sir.
Investment update also?
I think I'm next, right?
So that completes the consideration and discussion items that we had on the agenda for tonight. Next is reports from staff. And tonight, we have a presentation of the financial update and quarterly investment report for the third quarter of fiscal year 2021, 2022. Turn it back over to Scott.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is the quarterly financial update and investment report for the third quarter, which covers the months of October through June. We'll focus, as usual, on the general fund and the utility fund revenues and expenditures for each. In summary, the third quarter provides our, our final projection before we actually close the books for the fiscal year. That process will start here in the next probably six weeks or so. Preliminary stuff has already started. The projections that are in here are used to provide updated estimated fund balances, which can be included in our budget, which we just talked about, hence the $94,000 addition that came directly from this report. So this report is valuable, and it's one last chance for us to adjust next year's budget based on the projections in this report. As usual, we'll start with the general fund revenue expense summary and look at some major revenue trends. Total revenue as adopted in the general fund, we've said this at each one, of course, is 9.1 million dollars. We expect to be about 1.7 million dollars higher than budget, and that is primarily driven by the expected recognition of ARPA funds. It will come into the general fund about 1.2 million dollars. Property taxes and sales taxes are projected to increase from budget, as we've discussed in past reports. And there was a very sizable jump in franchise fees through CPS revenues in this projection due to the, the hot summer, of course, that we've experienced. Building permits, we discussed last time, continues to, I guess you could say, regress back to the mean or basically about pre-2020 or maybe at 2020 levels. We'll drill down into some of those revenues shortly, but those are the major drivers in the general fund. On the expenditure side, we are projecting a savings of a little under $650,000, which is just a little bit higher than our projected savings at the last, the second quarter report. Most of that savings is in personnel savings for, through vacancies, about $473,000. So if you take the 1.7 million dollars variance to budget in revenue plus the 650 variance to budget expenditures, that's a variance to budget of about 2.4 million dollars. However, we talked about this at the second quarter report as well. If you take a quick look at the revenues and expenditure budgets, the budget calls for use of 1.2 million dollars in fund balance. So if you look at the actual revenues over expenditures, the surplus, what will be added to the, the fund balance at the end of the year is, is expected to be about 1.1 million dollars, and that's revenues over expenditures. So we have a, a 2.4 million variance to budget, but a 1.00 million surplus in actual revenues over expenditures. Property tax is projected to be about $230,000 above the adopted budget. That's not counting delinquencies and penalties. These have basically been collected in full at this point, with, with, there's always some stragglers at the end, but we're essentially 99-point high, or the high 99 is uncollected in the property taxes for this time of the year, which is to be expected. We talked about, again, residential permits. This, through June, we decreased from 191 permits issued through June last year to 108 as of June of this year. Still the second highest level in the last five years, but we're, but we're seeing a trend that we're, again, seeing a return essentially to more stable levels or, you know, what we were seeing more in the, you know, pre, pre-2020, essentially. That decrease is reflected in the, in the fiscal year '23 proposed budget as we've gone through the revenues in that budget as well. Sales tax, as we've mentioned, each quarter is collected and recognized about two months in arrears, so there is a data lag. We're still trending about 15% above last year. We, we decreased the projection a bit from the second quarter, but we're still tracking to be about $81,000 over the adopted budget in sales taxes. We've added franchise fees to this report in the last couple quarters because franchise fee, franchise fees have doubled in the last 10 years, presumably as the housing stock development continues to increase, increase in the city. CPS, it makes up about 60% of our, of our franchise fees. That's largely weather dependent, so obviously with a, with a, with a, one of the hottest summers on record, if not the hottest, we've seen increases in that revenue source for the year that we're projecting for the end. So we add, I think, about $65,000 or so to that, to that projection for franchise fees as a whole from the second quarter to the third quarter. Take a quick look at the enterprise fund or the, or the city's utility fund. Again, water consumption has been with, with the, with the weather closer to, you know, 20, FY19, FY20 numbers than, than what we saw last year. So I don't know if I'd say this is getting back to normal, but certainly an increase from, from FY2020. And again, wastewater treatment has been pretty consistent, other than unusually high October with a little blip there in, in the last year, but generally, generally stable throughout. For how that translates into revenues, water revenues collected through the third quarter are a little over 75% of the budget revenue, so we're basically on track. Wastewater, we see, as we've talked about in each of these reports, is only about 46%. We're still expecting to recognize water, ARPA revenues as we continue with the, with the dewatering press project, so that will keep up through that process probably as we reconcile the books at the end of the year. So that's why you don't see that number as a higher percentage on the wastewater side. And it's about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars that would be added to that revenue source when, when the project is, is commenced. Overall expenditures in the utility fund, utility fund right now are trending slightly over budget. We can expect some modest personnel savings due to vacancies, but we are seeing increases primarily due to the, again, changing the GBRA service agreements that we, that we talked about in the previous ones. That's why you see the projected overage on the, on the supplies and services lines of, of the, of the utility expenditure report. And we'll track that as we get closer to year end. Last part of the report is the, the quarterly investment report. As this council all knows by now, the city invests its cash balances in, in tech pool in our current environment. Those interest rates are still not much, but the, the rates are slowly creeping up, as we've all heard. For what it's worth, the, the revenue collected since the last quarter, the second quarter we came, is about 700% higher. For those who are fans of percentages, it was about 4,800, something, I think, at second quarter. We're at 31,000 now. Still not much, but it's, it's, at least from a revenue perspective, it's on the, it's on the upward swing, and we have increased our interest earnings by, by many factors in the FY23 budget anticipating, based on what the Fed's saying, that that trend's going to continue for a while. The city's investment balance has increased significantly in the last few years with, with budget surpluses, as we've talked about, through increased sales tax, property taxes, et cetera, mainly the sales tax. The, I expect this balance will curtail modestly based on the FY23 budget when, when we expect to see, to start, to start spending down that unallocated surplus, the 3.9 million dollars that we talked about in the previous discussion. So we'll probably see the, that bar on the right decrease as we get into fiscal year '23. Again, the city typically invests in tech pool. One of our objectives next year, with a, with a new finance director on board coming soon, is to look at opportunities for, for other, you know, still safe investments that we could, that could perhaps offer a better yield. Traditionally, tech pool has been among the highest of the, at least of these comparables that we've seen, but for the last several, but, but for the last several quarters, that hasn't been the case. So we're looking, so at this point, I'd just say warrants further study. But again, as we see those spreads continue, that may be something we, we may want to diversify. Still very conservatively within, within the bounds of state law and everything else, but determine if there are slightly better yields out there through some of the mechanisms you see, you see on the chart. So it's about that third quarter. Again, it provides the final projection for the year to help, before we actually close the books, that goes into our final FY23 budget estimate. We will consider the current interest, interest rate environment as we look towards our city's investment pool the next fiscal year. You do have the detailed projection in your packet. This, this presentation and that will be available online tomorrow, and happy to take questions.
Any other questions? Just, just making sure. Any questions from anybody here tonight? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your time and all the effort you put into three presentations tonight.
Yeah, I think I can go now, right? Thank you. I did forget my water. Thank you.
That completes the reports from staff that we had tonight. Next, we'll move on to requests and announcements. Is there any council members that have an announcement that they would like to make?
The Back the Badge 5K is next Saturday, September 10th, not this coming Saturday, next Saturday. Sign up.
Is that a challenge?
Not for me.
Uh-huh. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let everyone know that household hazardous waste will be held on September 10th, so that's not this Saturday, but it's next Saturday, so that's another announcement.
I did have one announcement to make. Joanna presented to us a while back that we're going to do a change in our emergency notification system. The city has, has used Code Red for several years now, and we have many of our residents that have signed up for it and are utilizing it, but we're going to switch to this, to the Regroup system. Unfortunately, we can't take the registrations from Code Red and transfer them to Regroup. And so what we'll need is every resident to go in and sign up for Regroup as a new emergency notification system. Now, when Joanna presented this to us, it was a, it's a state-of-the-art emergency notification system, and it was cheaper, it provides us more capability, and allow us to overcome some of the challenges that we have at Code Red. We'll just have to, to get through the registration process. And so one, it's on the city's website down at the bottom where you could sign up for Code Red on the main page. If you go all the way to the bottom, it'll have a block there now for Regroup, and you can sign up for it in that manner. We also need, I need help getting the information out. What we'd like to do is get this to everyone. I know that Casey has been diligently working, putting out the information in all our multimedia platforms, and then it's posted on the website also, but word of mouth would also be helpful if we could pass this on to our residents to make sure that we get everybody signed up. And I'm not sure, how long do we use both systems? Do you know, Tobin? Are we Code Red and Regroup simultaneously for a while?
We're going to have about a month overlap, but Joanna can detail that?
Yes, so we are going live with Regroup today, so officially you can sign up as of today. Our contract with Code Red will not end until September 31st, if that's 30th, 31st, whichever is the last day. And so we will have, have both platforms up until then, but we are no longer allowing new signups for Code Red.
So really, the point I was trying to get to, then, we need to get everybody signed up in Regroup by the 30th of September.
Preferably, yes. The sooner the better.
Okay.
I got a text message today.
Yep.
Andy. So other people may have gotten a text message. It's not spam.
Correct. So if you are an existing Code Red member and have registered through that platform, you will have received a message from us today letting you know that there is the new platform, how to go register for it, and when Code Red will be ending. So, and we may send a few more of those out for those, just as kind of a reminder, up until the last day that Code Red will be active.
Thank you, Joanna. Tobin, any other? Is, for the council member, are there any members from council that have any items that you'd want added to a future agenda? The only one that, and I mentioned it earlier, if we could just follow up on the, the living wage piece and really where we stand as comparable to maintaining the one-third, maintaining our status in the one-third of pay scale and how that compares and to living wage and what, and honestly, I don't, what does living wage really mean? Well, that covers everything that we have on the agenda tonight. Anything else we needed, we missed, or?
Yes, sir. We're going into executive.
Yeah, I've got that piece, but it's just an open session. Is there anything else? Okay. Tobin, anything we missed, or? Okay, so we will reconvene back into executive session tonight pursuant to Section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act, Text Government Code. A quorum of the governing body hereby convenes into a closed session, and this will be referenced Section 551.074, which is personnel matters, and one, to perform the annual evaluation of the city secretary, and two, to perform the annual evaluation of the city manager. And Christine, I have the time now, is 8:53, and we are going into executive session.
We're ready? Christine, I have the time now is 11:39 and we are back in open session. During our time during executive session there were no decisions that were made that required consideration in open session. Is there anything else that we need to cover tonight? Tobin, anything else?
All right.
I have the time is 11:39 and we are adjourned.